We all have our weak points. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Welcome, and I'm glad you're all here tonight. My name is David Friedendahl. I am the mayor of Glendora and will serve as the presiding officer of this council meeting. In consideration of others and the business to be conducted tonight, we would ask that you silence your phones and any electronic devices, refrain from speaking unless recognized. Again, this is a public meeting for the community of Glendora, and we appreciate and respect your participation this evening. For the record, all the council members are present and on the dais so we can begin our session. Tonight's invocation will be offered by the pastor, Dr. Michael Cordich, of the First Baptist Church of Glendora. And following that, in my tradition to lean on a high school student of great repute, we will ask the pledge of allegiance to be offered by Charter Oak student Mitchell Gibbons. Pastor, if we'd all rise, please.
Let's pray. Father God, we are grateful for your grace and your mercy upon us as a people, upon our city, upon our state, and upon our nation. Lord, your word says that you love righteousness. And we don't often think about what is righteous, what is right. We are often thinking about what is right in our own eyes, in our own mind. But, Lord, we need to focus on the righteousness that you uphold, your righteousness. And so we ask, Lord, as these council members take their seats and hear of the issues of today, that they would have on their hearts and their minds a righteousness that would reflect your righteousness, that they would consider what is right and holy and perfect in your sight. And they would honor you in all that they do, to give you glory in the decisions they make. We ask, Lord, for wisdom as they make those decisions. We ask for grace as they communicate and others communicate to this council. And we ask for your spirit to be present here with us. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Cordich. It's always a pleasure. And thank you, Mitchell, very much. Our next item is a fun item. We get to learn about the upcoming events and the little past events from our local high schools. And it's always a great pleasure. And sadly, they're winding down as we go into the end of April, but starting into May, so this might be their final report of the year. But we'll get through it. So I'd like to invite Charter Oak High School rep Mitchell Gibbons to lead us off. Mitch?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to share all of the amazing things that are happening at Charter Oak. So our spring break took place from March 30th through April 6th, and we returned to school on April 7th. On April 9th, we hosted our annual spring rally, and for the first time ever, the junior class took home first place by dominating in the games. That evening, we also announced our prom court nominees. The grading period ended on April 11th, which means we're now in our final stretch before the end of school and summer break. On April 11th, three student athletes, including myself, signed their letters of intent to play their respective sports in college. Christian Murph signed to Claremont McKenna College, I myself signed to Wittenburg University, and Molly Jalino signed to Aurora University. A big congratulations also goes out to Charter Oak English teacher and our IB cast coordinator, Mr. Higera, who was awarded a prestigious scholarship. On April 14th, he took our senior IB English students on an enriching field trip to the Norton Simon Museum in Pasadena. From April 14th through April 21st, the Charter Oak Community Scholarship Foundation held interviews for students. Recipients of this scholarship will receive from $500 up to $2,000. On April 16th, we also had two exciting events on campus, which was our club food day and our auto club's annual car show. As for my spring sports update, boys' baseball is 8-8 and they're 3-0 in league. Our boys' tennis team is 0-1, and our girls' softball is an undefeated 9-0 overall and is 3-0 in league. Upcoming events at Charter Oak include our prom this Saturday, April 26th, and the theme is Enchanted Garden. Next week, the Charter Oak Theater Department will present the musical Newsies, and we'll be showing on April 24th and 25th, and May 1st and 2nd. May 7th, we will also hold our spring sports rally to celebrate our spring sports athletes and their accomplishments throughout the season. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And where is Wittenburg? You?
Ohio, Springfield, Ohio.
Call me in a year and tell me how about Ohio. It'll be a good deal. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mitch. Next up, Lily Lusk from Glendora High School. Lily?
Hi. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Lily Lusk, and I'm a junior at Glendora High School. I'm proudly serving as an exec member in our ASB program. I'd like to start off my report by expressing my gratitude towards each of you for your efforts in recognizing Glendora High School. The 2024-2025 is quickly, school year is quickly coming to an end. That being said, all juniors have been working hard to represent Glendora well by completing California state testing. All of our AP students are preparing for their AP testing coming up in the first weeks of May. In preparation, students have been attending mock exams as well as study review sessions led by their teachers. In efforts to recognize a smaller group on campus, our ASB has put on yet another successful event called Action. Our energy and passion for action doesn't stop and continue to shine bright as ASB hosted Action 2.0. Action 2.0 is an event that promotes inclusion at GHS by allowing growth and relationships between those with and without IDDs. Another recent awesome event was Best Buddies Prom. This jungle-themed prom allowed for students with and without special needs to get dressed up and participate in their very own prom. On the topic of prom, our GHS prom will be held at AV Irvine this upcoming Saturday for all juniors and seniors. We are excited to celebrate with a theme Sunset and Santorini. We recently had a ceremony where we recognized close to 500 students for earning an all-school award. This allowed for all students to feel as if their time and dedication has not gone unnoticed. Lastly, spring sports are coming to an end. With a few weeks left in the season, each team is doing what they can to play some CIF. That's all I have to report today. Thank you so much again for all of your time.
Thank you, Lily. Great job. I'm going to go a little out of order and change it up a bit. I'd like to invite Amy Vargas from Whitcomb High School to come up. Give us her report. Amy?
Good evening, city council. Thank you so much for having me here and letting me give my school's report. Our events on campus, our 11th grade students are currently taking the California state testing. We are encouraging them to do their best and show their academic growth. Whitcomb just finished their WASC accreditation visit. We will get our final result in June. It was a good visit, and we are expecting positive outcome. We have many activities planned for the rest of the year. On May 8th, we are having a tobacco cessation education event where we will teach students healthy alternatives to using tobacco, nicotine, or vaping. On May 15th, we will celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month by having cultural activities and a luau, including Hawaiian dancers. The Kona Ice Truck will be giving special treats after school. We are celebrating the hard work of our staff the week of May 12th. The leadership class has planned treats for the staff that week to thank them for their hard work. Our SEO class will celebrate the end of the year by going to NODs on May 23rd. This is a part of their reward system, and the students earn the privilege to attend this field trip. Graduation is on May 27th at Citrus College at 5:00 PM. Congratulations to all our seniors. We wish them the best of luck to the next phase on their life. Our student recognitions. Our Students of the Month for March were Anthony Schroeder and Leo Pepper. Staff will be voting for April Student of the Month soon. Congratulations to our student board representative, Diego Garcia, for his dedication this year. Congratulations to Amy Vargas for her hard work as a city council representative. Whitcomb recognizes and appreciates these students for being good representatives for Whitcomb. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Amy, and congratulations for a wonderful year. And now I'd like to invite Alexa Straight from St. Lucie's Priory High School. Alexa, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Friedendahl and esteemed city council. My name is Alexa Straight, and I will soon be graduating from St. Lucie's Priory High School. We had an extremely strong start to April with a night rally kicking off the weekend. This is a tri-school rally to celebrate prom held in the dark to the Survivor theme. Competitions included mattress surfing, Hungry Hippos, and relays with a performance from the Battle of the Bands winner. The senior class narrowly won their last night rally. The following Saturday was our long-awaited bash. It was a resounding success as we raised a lot of money for scholarships, targeted projects such as AC in the gym, and other general goals. Thank you to everyone who was able to attend, as it truly means a lot, and everyone is again invited next year. The following day, students enjoyed a Hollywood masquerade prom down at the Queen Mary. On the ship, students enjoyed dancing, beautiful scenery, buffets, and celebrated our 2025 prom court. It was such an amazing night, and everyone enjoyed a restful Monday off. On that day, five of our athletes were celebrated at our baseline league award banquet. We were treated to a dinner as each athlete's accolades were listed by school. Congrats to our five proud regents. After the day off, we had four more days standing between us and spring break. During this time, we had a Lenten reconciliation service to celebrate the Easter season and our elections for the next year's ASB. Congratulations to all the runners and winners for their hard work and dedication. On our first day of break, Lucie's hosted our first-ever mother-daughter tea. This was a nice way to start off break with both friends and family and a hot drink in hand. Everyone has been enjoying our two weeks off. Our region community has been traveling, visiting family, celebrating the Lord, or competing in sports. Currently, track and swim are having their last few meets before league ends. Both sports have had extremely close meets, having each more wins than losses. Next week, swim and track will compete in league prelims on Tuesday and league finals Thursday, Friday. We are so proud of our athletes and all they have and will accomplish. On top of league finals, the last week of April will bring on Easter mass to celebrate the holiday and a region community fine arts assembly. This will include performances from dance classes, dance team, cheer, song, displays of art, and a talent show. Starting off, May 1st through 3rd is our annual Lucie's musical. This year's theme is Schoolhouse Rock, and we can't wait to see what the girls bring to the stage. This will also mark the start of our AP testing weeks. St. Lucie's is ranked for all AP students across the nation as their hard work pays off. The following week, Lucie's will celebrate our Holy Mother Mary with a May-crowning mass, the final all-school mass of the year. In the same week, we will continue to celebrate the fine arts with a spring dance show and spring play. In case you missed bash, we will be holding our annual region golf classic on May 19th. Held at South Hills Country Club, you can sign up on the school website to this day of golf, food, drinks, and raffles. The following Tuesday and Wednesday are senior finals. Seniors will be recognized for their hard work at Universal Studios Grad Night on May 21st, following their final final. The next week will be fully dedicated to recognizing the graduating class. There is Rose and Candle, which is a senior-junior tradition, ASB inductions, baccalaureate mass for the seniors, a senior breakfast, and school-wide award ceremony, ending the week with long-awaited graduation. We are so proud of all the regents that will be crossing the stage and tossing rose petals on May 31st. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to present each month. This has been a truly fun and unique way to get involved with both my school and city, and I truly do appreciate the time. Thank you for all you do for the city, and of course, stay safe, have a good night, and God bless.
Thank you, Alexa. And it's remarkable to get to see the great talent of our youth and our community, and we're so pleased and proud of the service that you've given us. We would like to recognize you each individually with a little token of appreciation of the service that you've given to us. So we have a certificate of recognition to each, to Mitchell Gibbons, Lily Lusk, Alexa Straight, and Amy Vargas, along with a little gold bag package of some fun things. So if you'd all come up, we'd love to give you your certificates, do some photos. Mom and dad, you're welcome to take all the pictures you'd like, and we'll get you well celebrated. That was fun. That's good. Moving along, we get to a point where we have an opportunity to reorder or add anything to the agenda. Does anyone wish to do so? Seeing none, we will move along. I would now like to open our public comment period. In public comment, I invite members of the public to address this legislative body. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking once on both on- or off-agenda items. If you are in attendance, please fill out a speaker card. They look like this. You can get them on the counter at the entrance door and submit it to our recording admin before the close of public comment period. Once recognized, we'll invite you to come up to the podium, and you may speak again for three minutes on the subject of which you wish to discuss. And at that point, I have one speaker comment card only at this point, Mr. Kent Sommer. Kent? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. My name is Kent Sommer. My partner who's not here, Mike Bell, and I are the race organizers for the Glendora Memorial Day 5K. And I just wanted to come out for two reasons. One, to thank you. The city's been incredibly supportive of our race. This is our third annual race. And it's had great growth the first two years, and we know that's because of the great support we receive from the city, not to mention the incredible community that we live in. We have pledged at least half of the proceeds to Glendora's schools. It's been a modest growth or modest proceeds these first couple of years, but we have been able to donate all the proceeds to the schools. It's a great event, and we're really looking forward to it again this year. And so I just wanted, first, I wanted to just thank the city for, I'm a Glendora resident, and Mike Bell is as well. So we love this community, but really appreciate the support for the race. The other reason I wanted to come out this evening is because I would just want to mention this year's a particularly special race, as it will be dedicated to the memory of the fallen Glendora Police Officer Louis Pompey. A couple of months ago, the police department reached out to Mike and I, and we were able to meet with Chief Randazzo and a few other officers to discuss the opportunity of having this race dedicated to Officer Pompey. We feel very fortunate that they reached out to us and gave us the opportunity to partner with them and have the opportunity for the race to honor Officer Pompey. We're really excited about it. We've created a designated law enforcement category for all of the officers from all of the surrounding communities that we hope will be able to come out, and we'll have a moment at the beginning to honor Officer Pompey. Again, just another added thing where we are thrilled about the race, but also the opportunity we have to really celebrate this wonderful community and the people that are a part of it, including incredible heroes like Officer Pompey. So again, just wanted to come here and express our appreciation now for everything you've done up until then and up until now, and of course, the race. We hope to see you all out there. A couple of years ago, our city manager was there, and he won his age division and then didn't come back last year. So I think he might be just thinking, I'm going out on top and I'm never coming back. But to him especially, we would encourage him to come out, but all of you as well, so. What's that?
We do allow walkers.
We do. I don't know if the city council, I'm sorry, city manager's able to walk those races. But yes, walkers, everyone is invited. You'll see if you're out there. Walkers, whatever you'd like to do. But again, thank you all. We appreciate it. And yeah, we're looking forward to this year and this event, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Summers, and thank you for you and your partnership with Mike to put on that wonderful event. Appreciate it. Are there any others wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll ask if we have any correspondents.
We do not, mayor.
Okay, then I will close public comment and bring it back to the panel for member comments. Karen, would you like to lead us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that you probably will be mentioning this as well, but next Wednesday, the 30th, is the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. So if you haven't bought a ticket and would like to, you can go online, glendora mayors pb, and look that up, and you can order your tickets online. And then also, the very following day is National Day of Prayer, and the Ministerial Association will be organizing that right out here in front of City Hall from 12:15 to 12:45. And this week on Saturday is Earth Day, and I was just wondering if we're going to make any announcements about the unpredictable weather and if there is a Plan B, if someone is addressing that, because I've had a few inquiries. So, Mr. Lopez, are you planning to be out there with umbrellas for everyone? Is that what the plan is?
It's going to be marvelous.
So it's rain or shine? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mendel?
Well, I just want to make sure that everybody has heard what Karen has said. Those events are really important, and I would encourage each and every one to attend, especially on May 1st, the National Day of Prayer. Our city, our county, our state, the nation needs prayer. And I hope that this past week, as Easter has come and gone, Passover has come and gone, and even the Pope has passed, that what we heard and what we tried to do, we not only do for that day, but for every day. And as the pastor prayed, live in a spirit of grace and mercy and care for each other. And going to these events will help us to ensure that that is done. So thank you for all of those things, and I hope that each one of you can attend and make sure that the neighbors that you have can attend too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. Shawna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give a shout out to our Public Works Department. The light at Elwood and Foothill is fixed, so thank you to them. And our Community Services Department, the Easter egg hunts at Finkbiner Park and Gladstone were fantastic, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Michael?
So, what is it, a couple of weeks ago, the mayor and I attended, along with our wives, the St. Lucie's Bash Gala, and the food was amazing, and the auctioneer was pretty funny. He got the audience involved and all that. It was a great event. They were trying to use it for their capital improvements, trying to raise some funds for that. We knew firsthand that the lighting didn't work so well, as well as the electrical kept going out, and the air conditioning didn't work either. So obviously, we're going to put that money to good use. The Council of Governments, COG, has been working diligently on the Measure A money and trying to figure out how that all works. And also collected, I don't know how many of them, you can maybe tell me, but how many cities actually participated in the application process through the COG to get our fair share, or what they think is fair share, for our homeless situation. So they're working diligently on that with our staff as well. It's a challenging program. They still don't know all the ins and outs and where the goalposts are, but the COG is working really hard with that, and our staff is working diligently. So my kudos goes out to staff and the COG trying to make ends meet out of this to see if we can get whatever we can to help out with our efforts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I would like to echo the discussion about last Saturday's Easter egg hunt. I was able to make it to both without using my twin brother. Got to the Gladstone Park and Finkbiner Park to see events. Kudos to the Gladstone Cornerstone Church for their pancake breakfast and for Glenkirk Church for hosting the pancake breakfast at Finkbiner. They were remarkable. I think I witnessed one of the corrals in the egg contest took a whole 45 seconds to clean it. It was pretty amazing, and those were younger kids, so pretty amazing. But Community Services, Human Resources, and Recreation did an amazing job. Thank you all, for the entire team, for the work that they did. Yes, Mayor's Prayer Breakfast is coming up, as Karen said, Wednesday, April 30th. Tickets are still available, and you can go online as late as tomorrow and register, so please do so. The State of the City event is coming up on Thursday, May 8th. It's going to be not your usual boring, like you saw on TV from somebody west of us. It's going to be It's going to be an exciting event, so I invite you to make sure you're there. Keep an eye on the city website for details, but it will be remarkable. Memorial Day coming up, the end of Memorial, yeah, end of May, May 26-ish. Lots of good events on that day here in town. Two memorial reservances at Oakdale and Fairmount Cemeteries, along with the 5K run. So it's not a day to sit at home, it's a day to go out and honor the folks. So we encourage you to do that, all if you can, or any that you can make it to, so please do. With that, I'll bring it back to our city manager. I know he has a couple of comments and things to share, so Adam, please do.
Evening, everyone. Thank you. Really quick, on our website is our draft survey results from the 2025 Community Survey. Wanted to touch base briefly during city manager's comments on some highlights of the survey. Later on in the agenda packet, item eight is our strategic plan, and we just wanted to ensure everyone that, one of the hallmarks of that plan is ensuring the public's input is taken into consideration. So wanted to sort of touch base on this item first. So quickly, as you know, we do a community survey periodically. It measures quality of life and some other targeted items that we move forward with. The current survey, about 80% of people overall were satisfied with city services. The ranking, the highest ranking services as normal are library, police, parks and recreation, youth services, also online services ranked high this year, as did trash and recycling. This chart right here shows the progression between 2016, 18, and 22. Our largest gains in terms of satisfaction are by addressing homelessness, almost 10 points, maintaining recreation and parks areas, and operating in an environmentally friendly and sustainable manner. Providing police services also did show a small enhancement that they're already at 90%, so pretty good there. What dipped this year in statistic fashion is maintaining roads and streets, although the streets and roads do actually have a better condition. I think a lot of that is related to the item below, which is managing traffic as traffic signals. So as we've announced previously and included in the strategic plan, there's millions of dollars aimed at retrofitting old technology from 1991 on that front. Overall, the quality of life remains really, really, really good in Glendora. It's a great place to raise a family. And one of the items here is sort of a precursor where 20% of the population, when asked this open-ended question here about what would greatly improve the quality of life in Glendora, the number one answer was, "Not sure, can't think of anything." Number five was, "No changes are needed." So it's about 21% of the Glendorans think that no changes or everything is fine. There is some opportunities for expansion of shopping and dining options, addressing of homelessness and poverty, improving streets and infrastructure, managing growth, traffic and development, supporting affordable housing. As we'll touch base later this evening, all of these items are actually action items in the strategic plan with funded programs to address many of these areas. This is really quick, a chart talks about how the community has answered this question in a statistically valid fashion on most ways to improve quality of life. If you will notice, 2025 is more akin to 2011, where "Not sure, can't think of anything" is in the top five, and so is "No changes." Improving dining opportunities, streets and roads and homelessness round out the top five there. Just really quick to point out on homelessness. If you look over here, approving homelessness and poverty is about 12.6% of all people that responded. In 2019, that number was almost 28%. So pretty significant reductions or acknowledgement in the resources and the millions of dollars, and lots of staff time the city's put into that issue. Some of the key findings, Glendorans remain overall satisfied with how we communicate. Really interesting, when you look this year, they provide additional detail in the report about preferences by age and demographics, and it varies wildly. As you might imagine, the younger you are, the more you are leaning towards text and social media. And so we will continue to find ways to strengthen and enhance and raise awareness of the things that are going on in the city. Here's a little more on communication with residents. Overall, the city is trusted. We manage our finances well. We're responsive to community needs. And we still, when asked, the biggest question, which is always the hardest, is, "Does the city listen?", which is really akin to, "Does the city do what I want?" We're still about 60%, so above 50, but that is probably the lowest area there. But overall, in these main areas, the city continues to do a great job. And on the right side, the opinion of staff, great, you know, above 80%, 90% in staff being accessible, professional, and helpful. We took the opportunity this time around to ask two specific questions of the public. One was on emergency preparedness, on the heels of the fire and in close to a major anniversary of the fire at our foothills. We took the opportunity to gain some insight. This is just a small snippet, but as you'll note, 15% of our residents are not prepared at all for an emergency. The city has added staffing and resources in this area, and we will use this, including passing out some information at Earth Day, but a continued dialogue with our residents. For those of you who received your Glendora report at home, there are many articles on emergency preparedness in that article. So we continue to aim to improve the communication here. And one of the other areas that's also in the strategic plan was a hypothetical situation for potential development in South Hills in exchange for some enhanced community benefits. About 60% of respondents either strongly support or somewhat support a development in South Hills. Support is highest among younger residents, and most opposition is among frequent park users, which makes sense. So there's a larger amount unsure, at 11%. So this conversation, we'll come back to the city council for next steps and options at a later date. But this is also one of three questions in the survey. So with that, sort of some final takeaways. You know, we really continue to be a highly satisfied and rated community. There is focus on, including in your strategic plan, about maintaining current service and quality and strategically improving certain policy areas, whether it's street condition or streetlights or traffic, and what future growth looks like, and ensuring that people are prepared for an emergency, and how we're planning for more places to dine and shop, and how we plan for the goal line. But as has been the case since the residents really helped us out with Measure E and then Measure Z, we continue to be well positioned to build on that success. So Timothy McLarnie, whose firm does this report, we will invite him when he is available. He's a very busy human, to give a full report, where the council can ask lots of questions. But my comments this evening, we wanted to ensure the public that with your item eight this evening, that how the public views both our shortcomings and areas of excellence are represented pretty well in the strategic plan. So with that, Mayor, I am done with my opening comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam, and the community is just like at home. Don't know what to change and what's for dinner.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please.
Adam, can you just briefly remind the folks of what we're doing on the streetlights?
Yeah, sure.
And as well as the projects we have going on with roads?
So the city currently, as was noted on the Elwood and Foothill streetlight, that was actually an equipment failure. The Gold Line Construction Authority was the one responsible for that construction and worked with the vendor to update that. We have several streetlight segments. The city council's already approved over $1 million in improvements in camera infrastructure and a contract through the county along Route 66. We just received multimillion dollars in grant funding from the City of California or the approval of a ward, and we will continue to do some additional bidding, and that will improve a lot on the Gladstone corridor. And then we will be, we got the go-ahead to apply for another round of state funding, again, for more than $2 million to approve additional signalization and improvements along Gladstone, closer to the periphery, Arrow Highway, and maybe some of our other major areas around Grand and Baranca, as we border other agencies. So part of the problem is, the technology in 1991 was built, some of the cabinets with backup battery and connectivity via fiber or Wi-Fi connections just wasn't there then. And so with some of the changes with the gold line and traffic pattern changes, the city is working very, very hard to bring us up to speed after 30-year-old technology. So we are working on a section of the website and infographic that talks about the 55 signalized intersections that we have in town and what it is and where we're going. So we are working on it as fast as we can.
And the roads?
Yeah, so the study is currently being finalized, and when the pavement condition index, which is scored like a test score from 0 to 100, that comes back, we'll have that conversation with the council.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Adam. Mr. Turney, any chair?
Nothing for me to report. All right, thanks.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now move into special items and have a proclamation proclaiming May 4 through 10, 2025 as National Correctional Officers Week. And presenting our proclamation is Councilmember Shawna Elias.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did, were we going to have our?
Yes, please.
Come up here? Okay. All right, and I'll do my proclaiming. All right. Whereas correctional officers have the difficult and often dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of inmates in our nation's prisons and jails. And whereas correctional officers are committed to ensuring public safety by establishing and maintaining security within the facility and supervising prisoner conduct and behavior to avoid conflicts and escapes. And whereas correctional officers strive to maintain a safe, working environment in the jail facility, often in the face of challenges and dangers that threaten their own safety. And whereas it is fitting to recognize and honor our correctional officers for the important tasks they perform each day, for the many risks they take to provide for our security, and for the sacrifices they make to protect the citizens of Glendora. A total of 1,377 prisoners were booked in 2024, averaging over 100 bookings per month. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Glendora, do hereby proclaim May 4 through May 10, 2025 as Correctional Officers Week in the City of Glendora in recognition of the men and women who are a vital component of the Glendora Police Department operations. And this proclamation is signed by Mayor David Friedendahl on this 22nd day of April. And I will present this to jailer Fallon Atkins. Thank you.
Yeah, Fallon, would you like to say something?
Yes. I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of us Glendora jailers. We appreciate this recognition, so we'll continue our hard work. Thank you.
We really had 1,377 guests this?
It was a busy year, yes, sir.
My goodness.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. Next, we'll have a proclamation proclaiming May 4 through 10, 2025 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And receiving that will be, okay, I'll get this right, Deputy City Clerk and Records Manager Roxanne Priscilla to come forward, and I will present the proclamation. So whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens and the local governing bodies and agencies of government at all other levels. And whereas the professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas professional municipal clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Glendora, do so hereby proclaim May 4 through May 8, 2020, excuse me, May 10, 2025 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Glendora, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk Kathleen Sussman, MMC, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. I have set my hand and signature and the seal of the City of Glendora on this date, the 22nd day of April, 2025. Thank you for representing us and serving us, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of the City Clerk's team, we thank you for recognizing Municipal Clerks Week with this proclamation. It's truly an honor and a privilege to serve the City of Glendora and this beautiful community. As historians of our community, to being past poor agents, we take great pride in helping our residents stay informed, engaged, and connected. We are sincerely grateful for this recognition, and even more so to be part of a city that values community, teamwork, and good governance. Special thanks and appreciation to our city manager, Assistant City Manager, City Staff, Digital Media Team, and of course, the one who just doesn't steer the ship, but also knows where we left the keys, our city clerk Kathleen Sussman. Here's to continuing our mission with dedication, joy, and a whole lot of hometown heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program. And presenting this evening will be Community Development Director Jeff Kugel. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the second public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program for the year 2025, 2026, the 26th fiscal year. Just to remind you, the Community Development Block Grant Program is a federal program that was developed in the early 1970s to address urban blight and urban poverty. And the city receives an annual allocation from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The use of the funds must meet national objectives, which are to benefit low and moderate income persons and eliminate slum and blight in the community. And then also to remind you that this is part of a five-year consolidated plan. Every year, we adopt a five-year plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and then each year, adopt a specific spending plan for the program. For this year, again, this is the second public hearing we're holding tonight. The first public hearing occurred on March 11th, and then there was a 30-day review period of the action plan. I'm not aware that we've received any comments on the action plan in that period, so I'm going to report on the annual action plan budget, which includes an amount for administration, which cannot exceed 20% of the anticipated grant. We believe or estimating the grant to be, although it's very uncertain with the federal government these days, that we'll receive about a $314,000 grant. About 20% of that will be set aside for administration and the city's fair housing program. And then we have one project, which is an ADA curb ramp project in a section of the city. And I'll show you a map later, but the bulk of the money, or about 80% of the money, will be set aside for that project. Because we do not know what the grant amount is going to be, one of the things we'll be asking the council to approve is an adjustment methodology once we receive the grant, and that method- council to approve is an adjustment methodology once we receive the grant. And that methodology will go by a twenty percent amount of the grant for administration, and then any amount that then equals eighty percent of the balance of the grant toward the street improvement and accessibility project, once we know that. And usually, the federal government releases the grant allocations to each jurisdictions. Usually, it's May or June. It depends on how the budget's going at the federal level, but it can vary. But usually, we know by before the federal government begins their fiscal year, which I believe is in September or October. So the one project that the money is funding, or the non-administrative money is funding, is a street improvement and accessibility program, project will do thirty-one new curb ramps for ADA accessibility in an area between Glendora and Sunflower north of Gladstone, as well as curb ramps and curb repair associated with that project. Again, the timeline for the adoption of this grant, the first public hearing, was held on March eleventh, thirty-day review period, where it was available at the city and on the website to review, library several places at City Hall. This is the second public hearing, and if approved by the city council, after the public hearing, staff is recommending that we open and conduct the public hearing, following the testimony received and deliberation on the grant, use of funds, or the one-year action plan to approve the CDBG Annual Action Plan to authorize staff to make the adjustment levels based on the final grant that we received, and then authorize the city manager to submit the annual action plan to HUD for funding. And with that, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. And at this time, I would like to open the public hearing for public testimony, and invite any members of the public to speak. Speakers will be limited to three minutes, speaking on this agenda item only. If you are in attendance, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording admin before the close of public testimony period. Once recognized, speakers should advance to the podium, state your name, and speak on the subject you wish to discuss. Do we have any speakers wishing to speak? I do not have any cards. Seeing none, I will ask, do we have any correspondence?
We do not, Mayor.
We do not. Thank you. Then I will close the public testimony period of this, and bring it back to the council for deliberations. And I'll start with Shauna. Do you have any questions or comments?
None for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mendel?
No, I'm ready to make a motion to support this, but I think it's good.
Karen?
I know questions or comments, and I'm ready to second his motion when you're ready to move forward.
Very well. Thank you. Mr. Alawos?
No comments, and I'm ready to vote on it.
Okay, thank you. And I have none of the above. I believe I had a motion prepared by Mr. Thompson, and a second by Ms. Davis. Okay. And they will ask us to cast our vote. Looks like vote passes five-zero with no nays. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff. Must be something we're saying. Everybody's gone out like a lightning here. That's all right. Okay, next item is our consent calendar. Items six and seven on the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion without individual discussion, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for discussion. Does anyone wish to pull an item?
No, I'll move items six and seven.
Oh, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Alawos, a second by Ms. Davis, and I will ask us to please vote. Looks like motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much. Almost read six and seven again. Turn the page. Okay. Item eight is a consideration of the approval of the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-seven Strategic Plan. I would like to invite City Manager Adam Raymond to report. Mr. Raymond?
Good evening. A more brief presentation for me this evening. At the end of March, we had a pretty lengthy conversation about the city's current strategic plan for the two years that we're in, and the hundred and eighty-eight action items, and how sixty-five percent are done, and there's eight unstarted yet, and thirty percent in progress. And we talked about where those are incorporated in the new plan. We received some city council feedback, how it relates to the new five goals, and we're to come back for approval. So in your packet this evening, on the attachment, provides an update on exactly, everything we heard from the council, provides everything in a PDF package that breaks down the steps taken on how we got here, the goals, the breaking down of what a goal is, and an outcome, an action item, and an indicator. As we talked about last time, it's a really robust report. We talked earlier this evening about the city council's strategic plan, and how it mashes or meshes with our community survey. And so in that survey, the areas of improvement that people identified were improving dining and shopping, expanding affordable housing opportunities, particularly for the middle-class families, enhancing street maintenance and infrastructure, addressing homelessness, more productivity, and managing traffic, and related growth. And under goal one, on suburban living and intentional growth and livability, we talk about rezoning. We talk about housing developments that we'll be having at San Jose and the Woodland Site and around the station, that will have some affordable housing component to help address homelessness. We talk about revitalizing of the shopping centers in our Economic Development Action Plan, which is a part of this. We talk about developing various affordability levels of housing at the Dale location. We talk about Glendora as a place for people to come. And in that, the implementation, the Economic Development Action Plan, addressing retail and dining shortcomings, potentially along Glendora Avenue and other areas, we talk about a comprehensive wayfinding assessment, and also the creation of areas like a mountain bike park in South Hills. In goal three, in new and revitalize city facilities and modernizing public spaces, we talk about planning for a new and revitalized civic center, the completion of the Parks Master Plan, ADA Transition Plan, to ensure accessibility across the board. We talk about developing a citywide volunteer program to enhance community involvement and civic pride. In sustainable infrastructure, building resilience and connectivity, which is the fourth goal, we talk about a comprehensive pavement management plan to increase street conditions. We talk about completing key trail projects, such as the San Dimas Wash Urban Trail, improving Glendora Avenue and Foothall Avenue for pedestrian safety, which we also heard this evening from a high school student that comes to planning commission meeting. So that's a person after my own heart there, taking an early interest in cities. We also talk about our significant water and street infrastructure upgrades. And last but not least, goal five talks about staffing and technology and empowering effective to service delivery. We've talked about implementation of enhancing services, including an integrated three-one-one app and enterprise systems for utility billing, permitting, and asset management. We also talk about taking all of our old records out of storage and making them available for everyone in a more accessible manner, and really a development framework for sort of that smart city initiative, or helping us make better decisions more efficiently and more quickly. And, you know, as Glendora's population now has begun a downward trend from about fifty-two thousand, we're back down around fifty-one, maybe a little bit in the fifties, which is very similar to two thousand, and really highlights a trend that requires careful and intentional planning. And included in your strategic plan are also a lot of those initiatives and how we do that. So just wanted to highlight that a lot of the community survey results go hand-in-hand with the plan that's before you this evening. So with that, look forward to answering any questions, and really appreciate the involvement this council has had in this project since December of twenty-four. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Adam. With that, I'll bring it back for any discussion or comments. And Mendel, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I just want to say thank you to the entire team. As Adam just said, we started this the end of last year. This is a nineteen-page report complemented by budget. And obviously, we can't achieve that, or these goals, without a revenue stream. And I'm happy to let everyone know that the revenue's there, and we are strong, and we're going to be able to accomplish these goals. The survey is simply an outstanding piece, and staff has heard us. Staff has heard you, and you've had significant chance to, you know, give your thoughts. The survey, I think, had over eight hundred folks give thoughts. And so I am very pleased to support this. I have read this. Staff has answered any question that I've had, that we've had along the way. And I am excited because we are a city that is not afraid to step up and do some big, audacious goals. And so thank you, team, and I'm ready to support this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mendel. Karen?
Thank you. Great job. And I think right here, in this fabulous document, on the front is a goal for two thousand twenty-eight, our national landmark, the Bogan Villa, to have a Bogan Villa Festival, to once again add another reason why folks want to make Glendora a destination. So just a little prophecy right there of having that photo on the front. But thank you to everyone who helped work on putting this together.
Thank you. I'll challenge that. If you ever trimmed Bogan Villa without gloves, you'll think about that one.
Yes, I have.
Okay. Even with gloves. Fun idea, though. Shauna?
I don't have any questions, but I appreciate all the work that you and staff put into this. We saw how much time you guys spent on it, so much appreciated. My only two cents, when we were talking earlier about it, is I thought strategic plan should have been on there. Might be beneficial to put that on there when it goes on the website.
That changes forthcoming, yes.
That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Michael?
I'd like to mimic what Mendel had said. He said it all. There's a lot of work that went into this, lots of conversations and briefings and otherwise. And I think this is a really good docket moving forward. Staff has a lot of work on their hands to accomplish this. And as you always say, what gets funded, gets done. And that's next on the list, right?
Yes, it is.
So I'm ready to vote to support this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And I applaud the new strategic plan, but I also want to recognize leadership and staff. Seven amazing goals from grabbing all around the city for two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five, with one hundred and eighty-eight tasks, is no small feat, and nothing to snivel at. That's huge. And the fact that a very small handful of tasks are still being performed, and even smaller piece is to be started, those are carrying over, so they're not lost. But of that huge number, what an amazing success. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-seven Strategic Plan.
Motion by Mr. Alawos?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. They will ask us to vote. There's the vote. And the motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much. Congratulations. And thank you again to all of staff. With that, that concludes our business. I will bring it back for any closing comments. Does anybody wish to share anything? Okay. Thank you very much. See you at the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I have some invitations and tickets available if you need tonight. Beyond that, I will adjourn the meeting at eight oh four PM. Good evening.